Good evening, everyone. Tonight's our agenda prep meeting, but we have a special guest with us tonight, so we're going to deviate a little bit from our schedule. And welcome with us Bianca Pate.
Lila?
Lila. Bianca, Lila, I just asked you and I already forgot. Bianca, Lila, Pate and her family are here this evening. She is the recipient of our city award, our Student Recognition Award for this year. She has a very extensive and impressive resume, but instead of me going through it, I would like to ask you to stand up, introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about you and your accomplishment and your future plans.
Okay, sounds good. Start here, okay?
Sure, wherever you're comfortable.
Okay, so, hi, everyone. My name is Bianca Lila Pate. And this year I'm a senior at Grade Latrobe. And after high school, I plan on going to Washington and Jefferson College. And I plan on studying neuroscience and also double majoring in Spanish as well. And in the future, I plan on hopefully becoming a neonatologist. I love babies and I love to hopefully save lives, so that's my end goal. And just some of the activities, I guess I do in high school right now. This year I had the privilege of being, I was the captain of our cheer team this year, my vice president of our student council, vice president of National Honor Society, vice president of math leads, I'm treasurer of Spanish National Honor Society. I'm the assistant editor in chief of our school newspaper. Yeah, I do a lot of stuff. Mrs. Pate, does she sleep?
Oh, I had a bitchy schedule.
I rely on naps. Let's just say those naps are very helpful.
Power naps.
Oh, definitely. My power nap starts in like two hours. I try, I like to sleep during the day, soon as I come home from school, and then I work during the night. That's kind of how I roll. So, some things I do outside of school, I figure skate, and then I also teach figure skating. I'm actually second degree black belt as well, and I actually used to teach karate to younger kids. And then on the weekends, I work at Starbucks, so I'm a barista over there. And then on Mondays and Wednesdays, I'm actually training to be an EMT. And I test on June 18th, so wish me luck with soap pants.
Unbelievable. I'm amazed.
Thank you so much. And then hopefully during the summer, I plan on getting a job and working as an EMT, either on the ambulance or somewhere out in the community.
How about being an eighteen-year-old and having some fun?
Oh, tons of fun. I always have fun.
Who said that?
I was going to say, dad's so bad.
Where did that come from?
I also volunteer over at Excel Health Latrobe Hospital. I'm actually the head trainer over there, so I train all the incoming trainees. I currently have, I believe, five hundred, over five hundred hours over there, so it's pretty nice. So yeah, as my dad said, having fun. I like going to the hospital. For some reason, whenever I see people that are lonely or sad, I find it a challenge to put a smile on their face, and I feel like putting that smile on their face, that's like my version of having fun. Just like, I don't know, it just warms my heart, so I like that. See here, what else do I do? Such a long list. Oh, I think that pretty much sums it up.
Are you excited to be done with your senior year? And excited about going on to your next endeavor? Or a little nervous, a little low?
I'm both happy and sad. I'm definitely happy because I can't wait to move on into life and see what life has to offer me. But at the same time, I'm pretty sad because I feel like we have such a nice community here, and going to be sad to leave them. But a good thing is that I'm only forty-five minutes away.
And you'll come back.
Exactly. So you bet I'll be back over the weekends and during the summertime. But yeah, I think this community overall, it's really helped me out, been amazing, so I'll definitely miss this, but...
Thank you. You guys want to be down?
Thank you so much.
We're going to come down there.
Great.
Everything down there?
Yeah.
Little bit of dirt down here.
Yeah, we take off the dirt.
So on behalf of the City of Latrobe and the Latrobe City Council, we'd like to present you with a Student Recognition Award for the fall of 2017. It says on here, "The City of Latrobe along with Grade Latrobe School District wish to recognize you for your outstanding academic achievements and your continuous service to the city and school district." Congratulations, Bianca.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Aw, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Do well, Nani.
Thank you so much.
I'm sure she'll do well in whatever.
We know what happens. Agreement.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. It's always like this when I know that our future is going to be ahead.
Thanks for, thanks for having us.
Congratulations on being daughter. Okay, look here then, after he's done. Or is he, you want to get in there as well on the other side? We're sorry.
So much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
And congratulations to the school district. You guys put out great students over here, and it's our privilege to honor one as often as we can. We'd like to honor them all, but we can't obviously do that, so thank you for all that you do as well.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your help.
Did anybody say congratulations to the parents? Because without them...
Yes, absolutely. With my busy schedule, I don't know what I'd do without my parents.
Put up mom. Mr. May?
Dad wants you to party.
You guys did a great job giving us resumes. It's very, very hard to try to take one of the resumes you give us.
Absolutely. Appreciate it very much. And one thing she didn't mention, we had, the seniors watched the senior slideshow today, and the senior superlatives were announced, and she won best to bring home to mom. So I think that's a lot.
Everyone was like, Bianca, they're like, we put you down for best to bring home to mom. I was like, wait.
No, I did get a chance to look her in the eye.
Maybe they don't know the things we know.
That's okay. They're supposed to know. What are you talking about?
But they got to get past dad first.
Thank you. Oh, I've heard. I've heard all about my dad's gun collection he's going to show. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you. Good luck to you all. Thank you.
Okay. Item, agenda items?
All right, to be mundane. The, second on the list is the awarding of the low-bid contract at the voting meeting in two weeks to A. Liberani. Now you can see they awarded a low bidder by, by, around $6,000 approximately for our hot mix program. Number three on the list is, it's going to be a very short list, number three on the list is the accepted vacant lot donation on 609 Mill Street. You can see that I've included a plot plan and the picture of the property. So, and we've done the background, there's no taxes owed, they just want to walk away from it. They had it for sale for a little while, didn't sell it, and they asked the city if they would take it. And I think it'd be crazy if we said no.
Wayne, on the map, is it property 164?
163.
163. Okay, I stayed up to talk. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, 163. So again, like I said, unless council will have an issue with it, we'll vote on the voting meeting in two weeks and have Zach do a deed for the property.
Is that the picture?
Yeah.
Zach, did we search the title at all on this one?
Well, we did it on, we did with Laurie Zabstr.
Yeah. Laurie Zabstr did another search.
Yeah, it's clear, clear and clean.
Good. I forgot to give her her box for her award.
Mailer and empty box.
All right. Last on the hit parade, very short list, as I said, is the authorization of a solicitor to revise the leaf collection portion of chapter 305 of our city ordinance. Zach, speak to that.
Yeah, usually what we do is we'll have a motion on the agenda authorizing me to prepare and, you know, submit and advertise and things of that nature, but given the timeframe that DEP needs this in order for us to be approved for the grant, I prepared the ordinance and circulated it last week, and the hope was is to get it advertised for action at the next meeting at council. That way, with their timeframe, they want to have the approval out to us by the end of summer, and in order for them to do their review, they need it as soon as possible so they can go through their processes.
So you're saying you're going to advertise it before the meeting and we'll vote on it at the meeting?
Yeah, I can, I'll put it in the paper in the next couple days, and we have enough time to advertise it for the next meeting.
Yeah, this is in order to get that grant for the leaf back on its, like, on track.
Zach, I, I read one little, real tiny change where I can't even fit in the line where it talks about, "We will collect in such manner as will be established by the Public Works Department and they will give notice." I would just change the giving of notice from the Public Works to the city. Keep the broad channel, so they might give the notice, we might give the notice in the administration building.
Okay.
See where I'm talking about there?
Yeah.
Okay, other than that, we're fine.
Yeah, a little bit of rush because of DEP.
That's it?
Short. It's too hot in there.
Mike, Ann, you got anything?
Just a lot going on. So, we've been, we've been real busy at the transfer station, which is, which is good, so we've been just trying to get caught up, taking advantage of the weather and trying to get some things done, so...
What did you end up doing with the hours out there?
Well, we didn't extend them.
You didn't?
No, we did not, just the fact that personnel issues. You know, since I'm already short a guy, and I have to wait until I get someone, get that person trained, you know, so unfortunately, you know, I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to do it this summer, but I might be able to try it out towards the end of, end of the summer, just to give it a try.
You were just going to like them during the week, right?
Yeah, yeah, I was, I was going to try to keep it open, like a Tuesday and Thursday, just for a couple hours longer. That way it gives, you know, people time after work, get up there, and hopefully reduce the Saturday intake. You know, Saturdays have been extremely busy. You know, we've been averaging, you know, you work between 120 and 130 customers within a four-and-a-half hour period.
Wow.
So, you know, it's, it's very busy, which, which is good. You know, people are cleaning out things, you know, seeing it along the street, you know, or brick or anything like that, so definitely encourage that, so...
We're taking, currently taking applications for one opening, some potential for two, so we're getting resumes now, and like the last, starting doing them.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ann, do you have anything?
No, not really.
Other than Lila and I were talking yesterday, it's just grass, grass everywhere we go with grass.
Speaking of grass, the Lincoln Avenue Trail?
Yeah, I talked to Craig this, well, actually I talked to the foundation last week because they own the property, and they were having some issues, but they got it resolved, so they're supposed to cut it. They did some weed whacking today, they're going to cut it tomorrow. I talked to Craig this morning, so it'll get cut tomorrow. I know, I know, I bitch. I'm sorry. I complained. I forgot. Edit that out, please. I forgot, I complained because it was pretty bad.
I thought maybe something broke.
No, I, I'm not sure exactly of the details of what happened, but communication error, well, the rain, but, but still, it's...
That sucks.
Yeah, I mean, I cut my grass and it rains, and we all do that, so... So anyhow, I think it's been resolved. They, I saw that they weed whacked today, and they said they're going to cut it tomorrow.
I'm just going to ask a question. I see we have a copy of the proposal for the search for our new police chief, and I just wondered where we are on it at this point.
Well, I'm going to talk to Joe Blackburn. We made a couple adjustments to the advertisement that's going out.
We haven't seen that yet.
I know. Once we, those adjustments are finalized, then I'll send it to Joe Blackburn, and he'll be able to start the search.
We want to, yeah, we said you'll send the final one to us for final approval before they...
Yeah, I'm going to tweak it a couple of things.
Yeah, but still.
Basically...
Well, I, I, we got like eight different ones, so I'm not sure which, which one or ones you were using.
I can't remember which one. But I mean, they're, they're all kind of similar.
They are very similar.
You know, yeah, once we get something else, send it out to everybody, look at, and then send it to Joe and try to get a schedule of time of when they're going to do what, what time, because that was not an important time.
I'm sorry. I thought they probably advertised it for a month and then...
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, initially they sent me a schedule, but that was very tentative, it wasn't in an exact, so I can get an exact, because we had a couple people were asking about, you know, when the interviews would be, and I don't know.
What, will they send the resumes, resumes here, and then you'll forward them, or are they going right to them?
Well, we can talk about that. I don't, I mean, I think they can certainly get the resumes and send us copies, I don't really care.
Makes more sense for me that they get the resumes and send us copies.
Yeah, because they're going to be advertising.
Or that they just send the, I mean, I, if we're going to pay them to, I don't, I don't know that we want to, that we need to see all the resumes, because we're paying them to do the search, so...
By any reason, I'm going to, to get the resumes is for record-keeping, that's all.
But it's all done maybe, but I mean...
Yeah, if somewhere online, we need to have, I mean, we, normally what we do is anytime we have an opening, any resumes we receive, we keep those on file, just to show that in case for whatever reason, some of them want to know who applied.
Yeah, my, I mean, my, my suggestion would be they can, when, you know, when they, when they're done and they make their recommendations, and they can send us copies of them all, I just...
Yeah, I don't care what it does.
I want to try to keep it as removed as possible till we get down to the one or three to five, I think.
And I think we said, we said, I don't think it says six, but they can do six in a day. So if we do six...
Who can do six in a day?
The chief of police.
Oh, okay.
They can do, they'll do a maximum of six in one day in their interviews.
Yeah, I guess my question, let me understand, I want to understand the process too. So they get the resumes, they sort through the resumes, they narrow the scope of who they're going to interview.
Right.
Then they do the initial interviews, and then they make the recommendations from that.
Right.
In their initial interviews, are we present, are we not present?
Can be.
Is it up to us?
Can be.
Where do they do them? I guess they do them here.
They do them here. But yeah, I mean, when they do the first, you know, the six interviews, sure, council can sit in, I would prefer, I mean, the council probably shouldn't ask questions.
Right, right.
They can listen.
I guess the only problem I have with that is that, you know, unless we're, unless I'm there for all of them, I don't know that I want to be there for any of them, and that's probably, they're going to probably take, take place during the day, I would imagine.
Yeah, well, they can do it on a Saturday.
Yeah, that's true.
And that's what we did out there.
But they can only do six.
Right, well, they do six for in a day, unless you want, if you wanted to go more, it's not at $1,800 to do 12.
Yeah, oh, now we're not doing that.
Right, I agree with that.
So I mean, if you narrow down...
Not doing that.
I mean, I think that, and you know, I tried to say how many actual applications or resumes I'll see.
All right, well, let's wait and see how it shakes out.
And what chiefs will they, will be interviewing?
Don't know, it's going to be from chiefs out of the county.
Out of the county.
Yeah, they will not be in the county.
That makes it even better.
Well, most of, I mean, all the police officers, or as I say, a number of them know each other.
That's what I was concerned about.
When we were in Alhene County, we brought in people from different, they weren't in, out in eastern parts of the county, but they were out in other counties.
And do we need to know about any legalities, Zach, as far as, like, I know we can't ask questions during interviews, you know, that's probably not appropriate, but is there anything we need to know on our side as far as, once the interviews are conducted, how we behave as a council, even individually? With conversations, was, do you understand my question?
I mean, you guys can do whatever you deem appropriate to be educated about the candidates. You can review materials, you can communicate with people, the interviewers. Really, the part where it gets concerning is if there's a quorum of council together deliberating outside of a public meeting. You know, technically, it might be an executive session because it is a personnel matter, but, you know, to the, to the extent that there is going to be a quorum convened discussing this, we would have, have it be an announced executive session. So that's really where I get concerned, is where there's four or more of you guys talking about it.
So, I think we wouldn't be asking questions in the, in the interviews that the PA Chiefs Association are doing, but when they narrow the scope of the, of the top, however many candidates they give us, then I would, it would be my expectation that we would then be asking the questions.
Yeah, you're, you're going to sit in interview, what Zach's concerned is...
But again, that's just an interview. We're not, we're not, we're not deliberating on about the person, we're just, and we'll probably do what we did when we hired you, we'll get a list of questions put together that, you know, that we, and everybody can throw in their questions, and we can kind of, you know, maybe have Zach look him over so we make sure there's one.
And it might be appropriate to, to, when, when it does come to interviews by council, that it's done by a committee of the mayor plus two, you know, because it's hard to get seven people together to interview four candidates for, you know, an hour or two. So, you know, we might want to consider having a committee.
We have a personnel committee, so I was, I was thinking it could be, it would be the personnel committee.
And if, if you're going to sit in with the chiefs of police and listen to their interview, if there's a question in advance that you would like them to ask, it's appropriate to give it to them, you know, to have them, if you're looking for, if you're concerned about a particular portion of the, you know, the background or whatever, there's no reason, you know, not to, they're going to ask all, six of them the same question, but it's appropriate, you can certainly give them questions. I think the mayor hit it in the head. You want, what you do for one, you want to do for all, so if you're not going to make it for all, then better not to make it at all.
Yeah, we had some issues with that when we were hiring solicitors. You know, when you're interviewing a lot of people, even in the evening, not everybody's always available, and you can't wait for everybody to be available if you have a big group, so we kind of, kind of have to wing it, so I think it's probably, it's easier to get three people's schedules together than it is to get seven, so...
Again, like I said, maybe the issue where you do it on a Saturday.
Yeah.
Because it's, I know it's difficult through the week, everybody's got a schedule to attend to, and, you know, you could do your interviews on Saturday or even Sunday if you wanted to.
I like the Saturday part.
I do too.
I'm saying, I think that's, it's easier to schedule people.
And, and, yeah, and if they're working, if they're working...
Right. The chiefs are still working, we're looking to hire.
Right, right. Yeah, whether it's internal or external, they're going to be, they're going to be working somewhere, depending on the schedule.
Yeah, I mean, if there's three, if there's five of them, we can do them all in one day instead of trying to pick five evenings, so...
Is it anywhere in writing how many candidates they would recommend after they're done as chiefs, after they're done, they're...
Entirely up to what you want them to do. Like I said, each, each day they only do six.
They'll interview six.
But, I mean, they can recommend as many as, you know, what council wants. If they, if you want them to recommend four out of six?
We talked about that, Jack and I did, and I don't know, I think we did too, we thought if we got them to recommend, you know, three to five, that would be...
And that's fine, they'll do what you want.
If we get too many, then we're kind of defeating the purpose of having them do their stuff.
Yeah, if you go for those six, why are they...
Why are they doing...
Why are they doing their screening, you know?
I mean, and our expectation is that we're going to have like 25, but we might only have five, in which case then they probably only give us three.
Right.
Well, no, I'm just thinking, the sooner they know, okay, out of this pool that you're going to see, we'd want at least a minimum of five. If there are more, it might be two...
Well, if they can do six in one day, Jim, I'd rather see them do six.
No, no, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about how many, are they going to narrow it down to make a recommendation to us to say, here's step B, the almost final pool, the final pool.
Yeah, for example, is if there's 25, and we want them to narrow it down to five, that's reasonable, but if there's five, we don't want them to narrow it down to five because that's not reasonable.
And the easiest way to, to do that is they'll, they're going to score them.
Well, we, I mean, we're saying...
They can go through one through six, and take advantage of one. In other words, the list...
We can say no less than five, but no more than eight if available, something like that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Probably a good idea to give them some idea upfront.
I think we did three, we said, I think we said three to five.
Yeah, and like I said...
But again, it's just going to, a lot's going to depend on how many resumes we get.
I mean, if they have, if they have six strong candidates, you may want them just to list candidate one, two, three, four, five, and six in the order, and let you decide how many you're going to interview. Simple as that.
Yeah, I hate for them to have six good candidates and then pick only three because they feel they're the best for the city when they don't really know our city.
Yeah, well, that's why we said three to five.
They're going to, they're going to look on, look at background, they're going to look at experience, they don't know the city.
So they might have six people that have the experience to be chief.
Sure.
They should send them to us.
I think they probably will.
They're going to have more than six people probably that are hoping, we're hoping, but I just think you could say, I mean, you could, you got to draw, you got to pick a number that's not unreasonable for us to balance, and also doesn't make it worthless to, for them to do it, you know? If we have six candidates, if we have six applicants, we don't want them to recommend all six.
I would say if they only get six, then there's a problem. You know what I mean? Then we wouldn't have had the...
There's a lot of police, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people who aren't looking for police chiefs right now.
Really?
And, and, yeah, it depends. A lot of it is scale and, you know, not, I think the chief of police in the city makes a good scale.
I think there'll be, I think there'll be more. What do you think?
I think there's going to be probably about 20.
I think so too, that's why, I think so too.
But I mean, a lot of it's scale, I mean, how much you're paying. I think the city's paying a fair scale, but there are cities out there that are paying a lot more.
Bigger cities?
Yeah, and there are cities that are paying less.
Yeah. One thing that might increase or limit the pool would depend upon how far away they can live from the city and still work.
Well, all of those, all of those applications I saw, or the, you sent us, all those examples you sent us, they have to live within a 15-minute drive. Within, most of them said six months, but I had said, give them a year, because it doesn't, you can't really, it's hard to get your house ready to sell it and sell it in six months, so if you give them a year to be within a 15-minute drive, that's what most of the ones they sent us.
And that, that will probably shrink the pool down, because if you're working in Monroeville or Martinsville or Carwin, you're not within a 15-minute drive, that means you'll have to up it, so...
Right.
Do we have that read on me where that's what the protocol is?
It's, it'll be in the, it will be in the advertising.
It kind of ties in with what the police contract says. I don't think the exact distance or timeframe off the top of my head, but I know there's a limitation on how far the police have, they're going to live so far away, still because of the police.
Seven miles.
Well, so you're thinking the public works is like five miles.
Five was at, I thought the police...
With the police?
I thought it was, I thought it was 10 or 15.
I think you're right.
They got lived in the police. Well, you had that before, though, what was, um...
Five miles.
And was it five miles? Okay. But I think, I think 10 or 15.
But I, yeah.
It was five, it used to be five, but that was out of the contract, but still, I think, you know, 10 or 15 minutes is the right distance.
The other thing is, yeah, and I think what was nice about it is when you, all those different advertisements that you sent us were from all over the place, bigger cities, smaller cities, cities about the same size, and they were all pretty much the same 15-minute drive, so it makes us competitive in that respect, that no matter where, no matter where these people are going to go, if they're going to take one of these chiefs' jobs, unless they live within 15 minutes, they're moving.
Well, you take, you know, the chief police in Pittsburgh, Niagara, Pittsburgh's a lot bigger. We implemented... We implemented the same thing upon Alex, and just let it go, let it go, let it go.
Yeah, we didn't put it in, we didn't put it, we talked about it, but we didn't put it in his contract. It's in the actual advertisement, and would be in the contract. Which is your question.
Yeah, I beg to differ with the thing on Alex. In his contract, he sells house moving in so many miles in the city and stuff now. No, of course not.
It's not in Wayne's.
No, it's on mine. You guys are stuck with...
I know, Zach, it was implemented with Alex, it was not implemented with you, which I had no, Richard, playing about that, but if we're going to implement it, we need to enforce it.
Oh, I see your point, yeah.
At one point, we did not enforce it when we should, we just let it go, let it go, let it go. We all know what, or, we all know what the freak Alex did, though.
I tried to buy the nose or, but she wouldn't, she wouldn't come down and price.
Got to support me, Roger, that's for sure. Anyways, okay, anything else?
Anybody want to go to the, I won't be...
Yeah, I'll join, I'll go through. I'll be there. I'm due a proclamation. It's the 25th year of the Relay for Life on July 16th down at Legion Kine Park, it's their 25th year.
It says 10 o'clock.
At 10 o'clock, so they've asked for as many of the city employees and everything to come down and do the opening ceremonies as well as the...
I can make one lap.
So, well, we all have to do the survival, we don't do the one lap, survival lap, and...
I'm going to pan, we're huffing a little bit toward the end, so I'll make that lap.
So, yeah, so, you know, if you guys could put it on your schedule, the more of us that can be there, that would be great. And then also don't forget, Saturday the 9th is Fred Day, and so we'll be celebrating our beloved Fred with all kinds of activities and festivities downtown. So, Mike, town looks great, the flags look great.
Thank you.
Painting looks good.
Getting there, so, slowly.
I know, it's a, it's a crazy, busy time.
The bridge is looking... The bridge is looking good.
Yeah.
It's supposed to open on the 8th.
I, which I have a question. Does any, does council wanna have an official ribbon opening up there?
Fireworks.
I won't be here.
I would suggest that we...
You don't care.
I don't know. I mean, that would kind of...
Why don't we hold a June meeting out there?
You'd have to talk fast before you get brought over.
Well, yeah. Look, I don't wanna do anything that closes that bridge down. So if we do the ribbon cutting, we have to do it off to the side, but...
I mean, I don't know, it's, you know, it's...
It's almost like a shame not to celebrate it, but the fact that it's open, but...
It'd be a good PR thing.
Yeah. We could probably do something.
Okay. And I just want, because like I said, we have to just shut it down for a few minutes.
But I also know...
Yeah, shut it down, so ain't nobody gonna care.
I also, yeah, because I think there could be some intermittent stuff. Yeah.
We might wanna consider a bunch of jump in.
That'd be a short run. Your first, Jim. I'll check into it.
Don't have a short group.
If it's, uh, the 8th of June, come on quick.
I know, I know. It's just, you know, just to remind everybody that, you know, lots of kids out, school's out Friday, Thursday, so just slow down and be careful. And we, we did the Memorial Day Parade yesterday and it was Texas Sleven was driving and I was in the car with them and, you know, how slow we go during the parades. And, and, and we were, remember down by, I don't know, before Holy Family, one of those other churches, we were down there and this lady was holding this child. And this child, she's like, like a two or three-year-old, was kicking and screaming and just kinda like jumped out of her hands and ran right out in front of us and Sleven stopped. And we didn't, you know, even come close to hitting her, but we certainly didn't expect this child to come flying out. And so, you know, uh, just, you know...
Try that in a fire truck.
Huh?
Try that in a fire truck.
I can't even imagine. I don't even like to drive my car in the parade. I always have somebody drive it because I'm just afraid.
And walk, maybe look.
Cause it's so, yeah, it's so easy to get distracted.
Yep.
And, uh, uh, many thanks to everybody that participated in the Memorial Day Parade celebration on Monday. It's always the Legion and the VFW and all the organizations, the fire department, um, school district, they always do a really nice job down at the memorial. Um, we had a nice crowd and good weather. It wasn't raining, so.
It was a beautiful day.
It was hot, yeah, it was hot. So everything went, everything went good, so. Lots going on this summer after the, um, Relay for Life and we'll have the 4th of July celebration and, and then the banana splits.
Plus the, um, National Night Out.
National Night Out.
When's the steelwork?
It's usually the first weekend in August, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't know.
All righty, guys.
What you doing? If anybody wants to go, let me know.
I'm going.